I'll never forget that one.
That's nicely being put the best of right there.
The blooper reel. All right.
Read it, though.
All right. This time I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order on Monday, April the 25th at 2:00, and if you'll stand for the invocation, Commissioner Menon Hall will be delivering it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Join me, please. Almighty gracious, Heavenly Father, what a beautiful day you've given us. Only you can be the creator of such a beauty of the earth here. And Father, as we go through this meeting, we turn things over into your hands, and ask for your guidance, your leadership, your wisdom. Father now, for each person that has come out to this meeting today, we ask them, ask you to give them safe passage back to their homes. Father now, we pray one more time that you'll just go with this meeting. God lead and direct us, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I will ask for the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions, deletions to the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and the next item is public comments, and I didn't see anybody signed up on the sheet, so we will move right past that, on to the comments from the commissioners and the manager, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to welcome everybody to our meeting today. Thank you for your interest in local government in Stokes County. We appreciate your advice and your ideas, and encourage you to communicate with us anytime you have a desire to do so. So, thank you for coming again, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioner Nicholson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, beautiful day outside, so I don't know why y'all want to hang out with us, but I'm glad to have you, and hopefully you have safe travels back home, and I'll turn it over to Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Menon Hall.
Thank you. As always, I just want to say to each and every person that's looking out in the audience today, I think I know about everybody here, and it's always a pleasure to have you to come to our meetings. That's what being a part of the local governmental process is all about. Showing up, if you have something that you want to do in public comments, you have that right, and I just want to say to each and every one of you, if you live in Stokes County, you live in the most beautiful county in North Carolina. It's a pleasure to have you here today. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Vice Chair.
Same here, great to see everybody, and it's great to see the Lord has blessed us with a gorgeous day, and I asked you if you would to keep the Brown family in your prayers. Big Brown owner John Brown's got the story, his mother passed away unexpectedly this weekend. I just came from there, so if you would, please keep this family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
And I'd like to welcome everybody here today. Thank you for being here and taking time out of your day to come here to this meeting. And for those watching online, we do have gorgeous weather. No denying that was a beautiful drive over here today. That's all I have. Shannon.
Welcome to everybody here. It's nice to see such a good crowd here. We've got a lot of different folks here for different things. I'm excited for the group here and online, and our commissioners to see our VIA presentation. It's sort of what they've been working on since partnering with the county. They cover a lot of important issues in the county, and it's a really important thing they do, and they're doing a really good job. Other than that, as always, if you need anything, please reach out to Amber. I'll always be willing to help you with anything you might need.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll read the conflict of interest statement before moving any further. Does any board member have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda for today, or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest?
Nope.
All right. Moving right along, the consent agenda. Some minutes and budget amendments. Are there any questions about the consent?
Make a motion, we approve of the consent agenda.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the information agenda and the VIA health update this morning.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that introduction, and I appreciate your thoughts on getting back safely. I always feel sorry for whoever's behind me going on your curvy hills because I'm not used to them. I'm Cara Townsend, donor. I'm with VIA Health and the Community Relations Director. And I just want to say thank you for trusting us to continue as your MCO provider. We're blessed to be working in Stokes County, and I love it. I love talking with everyone from Stokes. I talk with the chairwoman quite often, and also Stacy Elms daily, and I just thank you. Everyone in Stokes County that I deal with certainly has a service, a heart for service. And so, I'm blessed to be here. And I just wanted to be here to kind of give you an update on what's going on with VIA, what the state picture is looking like, because we're busy. So, let me go to the next slide. So, we had to commission the state to ask for a redesign of our board because VIA added nine new counties on, as you all know. So, I just wanted to give you a quick look, and I'd let you know kind of where our counties are. And so, we're in, Stokes County's in Region Four, which is the red. Eight counties, so it's a pretty big region. And as you can see on this next slide, that we serve the most people here in this region of all the VIA counties. So, that's important to know. You can see in this bottom, in this bottom square, all the counties are listed in Region Four. So, it's a pretty powerful combination. So, the next thing I wanted to talk about is kind of the Board of Directors. And so, we make sure that we have fair representation. We want, we want the counties adequately represented. So, this is kind of how our regional board, or actually our boards, our board is composed of leaders around the state. So, something really important is the Consumer Family Advisory Committee. So, there's one person designated, or two, one to two people for each county. And this is an important group of people because they are really the advocates for the state. They usually have lived experience in mental health, substance use, or in the foster care system. So, they're really important advocates. And then, we have one person designated by the secretary. So, I just wanted to point that out. And for our region, Stokes County is represented by Chairman, Chairwoman Cox, and also Stacy Elms. So, they've been important leaders on our board. And here's just a little bit more on the Consumer Family Advisory Committee. And I wanted to mention this because we are looking for two representatives from Stokes, representatives of Stokes County. So, if you know of anyone who might be interested in serving, we meet quarterly, and it's something they could kind of check out before agreeing to it. So, our CFACs, for short, are state mandated. So, they could, they could check out a committee. They could also talk to some other advocates to see if it's something they'd be interested in doing. But please let me know if you think of anyone. I wanted to let you know about the tailored plan. So, this is coming up to launch in December. So, this is the biggest, really the biggest Medicaid transformation the state has ever seen. And what's going to be happening is, instead of VIA Health just managing mental health, we're going to be managing physical health as well. And really, it really boils down to the severity. So, a Blue Cross and a Blue Shield and a VIA could both have someone with a substance use disorder. But if someone, whoever has the more severe disorder would be handled by VIA. So, we're just going to be splitting it up across the state. So, right now, VIA is in the process of working with pharmacy and physical health providers because they're going to be contracted. So, there's a lot, a lot going on to improve the health. And this is all geared toward being person-centered. So, we're really trying to make it more tailored to each individual to get the best care. This is another thing that's going on in the state. So, this is the Child and Family Specialty Plan, formerly known as the Foster Care Waiver. So, in North Carolina, unfortunately, we have been more geared toward institutionalized care of children instead of care centered around families and in foster care families. And so, we really want to change that dynamic and focus more on how to educate foster care families on how to be parents. And we find that a lot of this is really just about education. A lot of people haven't, really don't even know how to be parents in the first place that we deal with. And so, we're really wanting to educate them on the basics and help families be successful in foster care, and also bring in more families to the system because we really need it across the state. So, right now, we're getting ready to launch into the tailored plan, as I mentioned before. And so, the state suggested launching the tailored plan and this Child and Family Specialty Plan at the same time, and it kind of, it put us on alert. And all the MCOs are on alert for this and let the state know because we don't feel, this really takes away, the way it's designed right now, it would be more of a state plan instead of a regional plan. And we believe that would really hurt more rural counties because really the devil's in the details in this language. And so, we're kind of working it out with the legislature. But right now, as it stands, the details say things like all willing providers that would be willing to go to the counties. And as you know, as a rural county, it's already hard to get providers here. That's one of the details. And also, as I mentioned, there really isn't a great communications plan laid out on how we would educate these families, these foster care families. So, we're worried about a couple of those things. I list the pros, pros underneath. The good things about this plan is it will include foster care children and their families, and it also will raise the age limit on foster kids we look after to age 26 instead of 21. So, it does some good things, but we really need to work out the details with the state. And so, Chairwoman Cox and Stacy Elms have been gracious enough to write a letter to the state. If the rest of the commissioners would be willing to do that, that would be great because they're really counting each commissioner for the county. And so, it's becoming quite political. So, we have probably another month and a half to get our voices heard at the state level before this happens, so.
I have a question about that, but I can wait till the end.
All right, you can go ahead.
What happened with the region, or the statewide county commissioner group? Did they decide to try to back what the LME MCOs want to do with that? Or where are they at as a group? Because I know there was some concern how they were leaning and.
Yes, so Region Four was in support of the more regional plan. They just, I think the consensus of the group was that, you know, they don't believe that having a one-size-fits-all state plan really benefited all the counties in VIA. And VIA's specialty is rural counties and rural health. And so, I think that was the biggest message from that group.
The statewide, which would cover all the counties, the County Commissioner Association, do you know which way they're leaning?
I don't. I don't, but I'll find out for you.
Yeah, get back with me on that. Because I know, I don't think when the state plan first rolled out, there was enough information to, at first it looked good, but then, I think, like she said, not just VIA raised concerns, but all the other providers that are LME MCOs raised questions about if it was, especially with rural counties, if it was going to help. So, I had a pretty lengthy phone call with Mr. Brummett about all that. And that was the first I had heard of it, and I serve on the DSS committee. But it had just kind of been sprung on everybody in February. And we had had our March meeting, which Stacy hadn't brought it up yet because there really wasn't enough information at that point about all the concerns. And now, what the letter she's referring to is that me and Stacy both signed the letter asking the state to just pause and kind of give us time to look, instead of jumping into this and implementing it so fast because we did have concerns about how it would affect rural counties with the foster care system. It's like, kind of like, you know, like, sort of like the state's kind of trying to take it over.
Yes.
So to speak. And some of the things that the state's taken over, we know how they've turned out.
And a lot of the concern is that this would change as administrations change. So, they could change this plan.
As different governors come in, it could, it could change for sure. What was your question?
Question, I heard you say something about writing a letter within the next month and a half. Is that correct?
Yes.
But you guys signed something to them to pause. Does that deal with the same thing?
Right.
Okay.
It is, but if we could look to do something from our whole board, and we could all sign it.
Okay.
If we agree that the state should just, we should just pause on this and give it more time to be implemented and let us expand it. Because I think as a county, because several counties are starting to opt out already. And that was a big concern because what was, was it Forsyth or one of the big counties? It was a couple of articles about this in the Journal recently about them wanting to opt out, and it ain't even really been implemented yet. And they're already trying to get out of it.
Yeah, it's just more, kind of more bureaucracy.
Right.
You know, up dealing with our kids. So, we really want to focus on local providers and make sure that we have, you know, our regional feel. So, it just doesn't, doesn't go along with our belief system and how we take care of our counties. But I'm, if I can provide more information, I'm happy to do that.
Well, we have a DSS board meeting tomorrow, so we could discuss that in greater detail to see if they're, if Stacy and the board are okay with us doing some type of letter, supporting the pause and supporting more time to look at this and what our concerns would be about the state taking it over and versus how we could be benefited by a tailored plan for our communities, for our kids, for our area, and what that would look like. And the way I think the state was trying to sell it is there are some counties that have a really hard time with placement. But, and I guess they were thinking this would give them more leeway with that. But sometimes, you know, I have concerns of shipping our kids off to other counties and other parts of the state and stuff, but sometimes they do it because they have to. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's, you hit, you hit it. It's exactly it. And, you know, we're concerned that the larger counties like Mecklenburg and Wake, they have more resources, and so, it will be, you know, they'll have, I guess, more of an insider position with the state. So, we just want to, we just want to work through some of the details. Not saying it's completely bad, and we need, we need help, but I don't think we need to rush into it with tailored plan. And it also makes our provider system very frail. It is anyway, you know, we're having, there's a shortage for people working in mental health right now, and so, it's just, it's shaky ground. And so, we just want to make sure we have a solid plan before we go through with that. So, and the other thing I wanted to say, I gave each of you a blue packet. That is kind of our checklist on what's going on with VIA, and it's on the back page. But I just wanted to kind of show you what we were doing. And we made some promises to the commissioners when we were talking about being your MCO. And I just wanted to highlight something that I'm really excited about in Stokes County. Commissioner Cox and Stacy Elms have helped me formulate the Executive Substance Use Committee in Stokes County. And we had our first meeting this month, and I'm just really excited about it. About 25 people came, and we had the commissioner, we had the CEOs from Insight, and Billy West was also there from Daymark. And we had a great conversation, and it's really, we're really looking at the community as a whole and how we can help, you know, fight this substance use problem. And, you know, anything from the schools to reentry and education. And, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing interesting things in substance use, and especially for our kids and social media. There are about 80,000 drug dealers on just Snapchat. And so, they're selling our kids things that they think they're getting a pain pill, and it's really fentanyl, and it's lethal. And so, we really have to attack this problem from all different sides, from law enforcement to government to the schools. And so, we're really looking at creative solutions, even in the schools, on how to, you know, how to have these conversations with our kids. So, I think that's all I have to report. If y'all have questions, I'm happy to hear them.
I just have one. On the CFAC board members that you were seeking.
Yes.
Would that logically be like family members of people who are receiving treatment from you, maybe, or?
Sure, it could be. Or it could just be someone who, you know, they've had a family member who has dealt with one of these issues, whether it be mental health, substance use, intellectual and developmental disabilities. Any of those. These are just advocates really that help us identify gaps, you know, and keep us on track, you know, things they're seeing, if they have problems with access, if they have problems with referrals. They'll let us know, and we'll start working on it as a group. So, it's a great group of people.
And they meet quarterly, did you say?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I have one in mind, I'll get with and submit.
Thank you.
Have y'all got an office in Stokes County yet, or space?
We do have space. We're still trying to decide if we will keep that building. It was a building that Cardinal had. I am, I'm representative here, so I'm in Guilford County. So, I'm close, but my office is based out of there. But yes, we will have space, but it's not going to be manned all the time.
Okay. Since y'all took this over, have y'all seen an increase in the substance abuse in the county?
I can get you the numbers for that. I don't have them off the top of my head, but I'll get you the local numbers so you can see.
We looked at that, the latest statistics.
I tell you, from a fire department standpoint, I know they up.
Yeah.
Because we're running more overdose right now than we've ever run.
Yes.
In fact, we had one this morning.
And this was the biggest concern for Sheriff Lemons. When we met, he said, you know, addiction and overdose is mine, is one of my number one priorities.
And that's my big goal, is to delistate that and get it moving forward. And I ain't talking about let's do it next year, I want it. Let's get this to it now. Because I think we've drugged the ball too far behind the chain as it is now. We sit, talk about all the substance abuse stuff, but we never implement it and go forward and do it. We have nowhere for any of these people to go whatsoever. The places Forsyth County, and I'm sorry, I'll just put it to you like it is, it's a joke. I sat there and watched what happens. I've actually seen overdosed in the parking lots. Where they go get help. So, I've been there and seen it. But we got to reach out to these people, and reach out faster. I think we need to move quicker than what we're doing right now.
Well, I'm excited about the committee, and I think it was, well, the county asked us to form it. So, it's really going to be owned by the county. And so, this is why we chose the people that we chose, and I didn't choose them. The leaders did in Stokes County, some of the leaders. But I'm excited about that because that was one of their concerns, is that we haven't had anything that really had teeth to make a difference. And so, I hope that changes with this, and we'll keep you updated on the progress.
I have a question.
I ask for this. You said you did have space in the county here. Do you have space there?
Cardinal space.
Yes, we do. It's more of an, it's more of office space.
Can you tell me where it is?
It's located next to a dance studio, so I don't know the address.
I think it's Autumn Square area.
Autumn Square.
Yes. So, that's office space. Now, we are looking at hopefully bringing a provider here at some point to help with substance use. We don't, we haven't identified the space yet, though, or that will be.
They're looking, though. I know they talked about that. After the meeting, they were going to go look at some spaces. So, I mean, we were talking about doing some medical assisted with trying to do some prevention stuff or some treatment, medical assisted treatment. But we're trying to roll that out a little bit slower because everybody needs to understand what that is about. And I don't want it to get a bad rap right off the bat when people don't understand what it really even is, you know? So, but that, the access to medical assisted treatment is huge for our county because it's, they have to go into Winston or Guilford or somewhere else to get that, and transportation's always an issue for them. And so, the longer it takes to get there, the more of an issue it is. So, that's something that we're looking to bring, but it'll be just a slower rollout so that it's successful, you know? But it's coming, and they're here looking for space. Thank you so much. We appreciate everything. Appreciate that you're keeping us up to date and coming to our meetings and always a phone call away and answering our questions and stuff. It's something, it's refreshing from what we've seen in the past, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. The next thing is the Register of Deeds quarterly report.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me on today. I think all of you have my report in front of you. So, you can see the numbers. I'll just go over the highlights of that report. For the third quarter of our fiscal year, we took in $64,148 in recording fees and $94,748 in excise tax for a total revenue for the quarter for $158,896. You can see how many documents of different types we recorded. I'm not going to go through all of those line by line. The number of transactions has increased over last year 3.66%. And our revenue is a 3.87% increase. That number's been more dramatic over the last few quarters, but we're now at a point where we were already busy last year, too. So, it was an increase, but not as big as it was from 2021 back to 2020. You can see the chart of what the state collected from our office. That totals $56,338.80 for the net revenue for the quarter, $102,557.20. Any questions about those numbers?
I see you had four birth certificates.
Yeah. We don't have a lot of those. I may mention this every month or every quarter. Get us a maternity wing at Life Bright, and we'll boost those numbers.
Oh, that's okay. We're just more people that didn't make it to the hospital, or maybe they planned that.
I think, I think most of them are planned now. I hope so. But first, I want to say it, I love what I do. It's a joy to be here, and I appreciate the citizens of this county giving them the opportunity to be here. And it's always good to stand in front of you guys. We have three specific, county-specific revenue accounts. And a few days ago, the last one of those exceeded our projections for the year. So, now, all three of them have exceeded revenue projections for our current fiscal year. The total county revenue projected was $327,500 for the year. And as of Friday, we had collected $407,695.65. Our gross revenue for the year so far is $653,880.50. That's, that just about beats last year altogether, and we got two more months. So, we're doing really well. I love being able to do that, and I don't know how long we can do. I don't know when the housing market's going to take its downturn, but it will eventually. I hope it's not a dramatic slide like it was, you know, 15 years ago. But I do anticipate it going down some in the future. I don't know when that can be. The Fed raised rates to close to 5% here not too long ago. So, I know that's going to damper demand for a little while. But they're trying, I know they're trying to fight inflation. But we'll see if that takes any effect over the next quarter. Hopefully, it's not too bad. I mentioned in my last report the statewide portal for access and birth and death records. Frankly, the state keeps moving the goalpost on us that we're going to have access January 1st, and it got moved to March 1st, and it got moved to April 1st, and now it's January 1st of next year. That's birth/death we will have access to statewide, starting May 1st. They have not moved that one. Which we'll be able to access any of that certificate in the state through that system, starting May 1st, anywhere in the state. The birth certificates, like I said, will be January the 1st. And again, they're only accessible 1971 forward. So, if you were born before 1971, we can't help you. You'll have to go to the county that you were born, and that's, that's not, that's not my oversight there. That's the state. Without our records in Raleigh, they have, they have had severe staffing shortages just since COVID. They were operating, last I heard, about 42% of their staff. And a lot of them didn't come back to work when they were out working from home. And they've had a lot of turnover, about 60% turnover. A lot of new people in new positions, and it's frustrating dealing with them. Our association just wrote a letter to the governor about it. People are waiting over a year to get an amendment done to a birth certificate, and that can hold up Social Security benefits. I mean, it's a major problem. And so, the governor knows about it, General Assembly knows about it. So, we're trying to get some resolutions. But we'll see. We'll see how that goes. I can say it's very advisable to go to the Register of Deeds for copies instead of the state because they are months behind. They don't have the resources right now to handle all of them. But we're hopeful we can get access to the deaths on May, on March, yeah, May 1st, excuse me. And they have access to what's called the legacy EBR system to access births across the state. That was the old system before they started the new portal, and we never participated in that. And when I started the process of getting that implemented here, they announced the new portal. And I said, well, I'll just wait. I'm not going to train staff on it. And I said, well, I'll just wait. I'm not gonna train staff on a system that we're not gonna use for two or three months and then have to learn a new one. So but then they kept moving the goalposts, so um, I haven't decided if we're gonna try to use that system and learn it between now and then or just wait. But um, that's a uh, that's a delicate problem. I I wanna help people, uh, but uh, I don't I don't wanna waste staff's time learning a system that's gonna be defunct in about eight months. So anyway. Uh, we have a back indexing project that's going on right now. It should be completed in May, which will fully index all of our land records back to nineteen seventy-nine. Currently, they're nineteen ninety-three. So this is gonna be a big uh, help to the um, real estate community, all the real estate attorneys, uh, mortgage brokers, anybody from the banks, the individuals, real estate brokers, to access our records on a daily basis. This is gonna be a big help to them. Because right now you have to go through scanned images of our old index books by last name, but then go through all the first names looking for that record. And once this is done, you'll just be able to search first and last name, just that one person. And it's a lot less results to filter through. So it's gonna be a major convenience and that's a January first seventy-nine through December thirty-first ninety-two. That's basically fourteen years. That will be um, fully searchable like that uh, once this is done in May. Uh, by the end of the year, we're gonna have uh, some of our oldest marriage records preserved again. That's about five years worth. That's expensive work. We don't do it really often. We do it every year, but we don't get a lot of it done because it is expensive. And all that comes out of our preservation automation fund, which is exactly what it set us up to do. Uh, you can go on my Facebook page and look at before and after pictures. These records are falling apart in your hands. They come back a lot better in new binders, disaster recovery binding or downstairs. Anybody can come down and look at them anytime. Uh, I'm working on a presentation for assumed business names. The laws that govern those change in twenty seventeen and the state really hasn't done a good job of getting that information out to people. Uh, it's gonna basically affect every sole proprietorship in the state. December first twenty seventeen is when that went into effect. December first of this year, every assumed business name recorded before that date will expire. Uh, December first twenty twenty-two. Uh, I thought so. Sorry about that earlier. That's their business. It's one of them. Uh, they'll have to file a new a new business name uh, between now and then and between now and December first. I'm working on this presentation, trying to get it out to uh, I think I'll try to come back here if you'll have me and give you a proper presentation on it and what all uh, nuances of that law and what's gonna be changing. And uh, some other civic organizations and other local organizations, try to get their word out to them over the next few months. I received my certification as Registered Dees through um, Unity School of Government and the Registered Dees Association this year. I'll be getting my PIN this following our conference and that's all personally what I've done in the last quarter with the office. All I've got.
Sounds like a lot.
Busy, yeah.
You have any questions? Go ahead.
One quick one. Will every LLC have to change, do something with their name?
So assumed business name, if you do business as the LLC you're registered with the state, if you do business as that exact name, you don't have to have an assumed name. So if you if you're saying, the example I'm gonna use in my presentation is Duke Energy. Uh, Duke Energy is their assumed business name. Duke Energy Corporation is their legal business name. They do business as Duke Energy everywhere. So that's what they have on record here. They're gonna have to file a new one between now and December first. If you do business as anything besides the the uh, name you have registered with the state, you have to file an assumed business name.
Okay.
That's what I'm gonna be talking about uh, in a couple of months. The sole proprietorships don't go through the state. They come directly through us, which that's gonna affect a lot of people. And like I said, the states really hadn't, they hadn't really got that information out. And we did talk to them at our legislative conference in March about that and they have some plan to bolster that this summer, I think. But uh, I've kinda taken the initiative this summer to do that myself because I I don't like waiting on the state to do anything.
Sounds good. Anybody else?
It sounds like you're gonna be busy with that alone, so.
Yeah, that's it's a lot to take on, but people need to know. We're gonna have a rash of those people coming in saying, uh, my business account's not working or whatever. So I think I don't want that.
All right. Anybody else?
Just want to say thank you.
My question.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, we appreciate all of everybody. It sounds like you need to get with Neil at the paper and this might be a good article to uh, put in there so people start having that heads up about getting in before the rush.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to do that.
Yep, thank you. See you later. All right, that takes us to the discussion agenda. The item A is the courthouse needs an expansion.
I'll start us off on that and then there's um, we've invited, of course, the judges to be here, Judge Pickett and Judge Southern and some members of the Board of Elections, I see here, Ms. Himbruk and I think I saw Mr. Burge back there, um, to be here just to we've been meeting with them on and off throughout the process, just trying to be sure everybody's understanding what's going on and has input into what we're thinking about doing. So what you'll see in front of you is the memo on here, of course, and then the newest updated um, revision for the plans that includes taking out the Board of Elections and the Veteran Services Office. The Veteran Service Office does not need a tremendous amount of space, so we've identified it could be relocated on the third floor in this building, which Mr. Hunzucker is in favor of because he would like an office space with a window, a little easier for him. And that way his um, visitors wouldn't have to do the security in the courthouse. They can just come straight here. So I think that'll work for him. The Board of Elections is is different because it's a much larger space. Um, we've looked at all the county buildings and property. Hard to find anything that's suitable because of the size of the space that they need, as well as they have to be accessible to the public. So we had a few spaces that might work space-wise, but the public access was just not good. So we even tried to look at a solution of keeping them in the courthouse, um, giving them a separate entrance, an exterior entrance only and an exterior exit, no internal entry. That seemed like it might work okay, but it really just took too much space away from the courthouse design, which is what we're trying to do is give them more space, not take more away. So that was scratched from that. Um, then we started looking at options for possibly a new structure. In the same area we looked at first with the probation building on the hill by the maintenance building, we were looking at about a thirty-five hundred square foot structure with Perry Peterson estimating that would cost about five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to build that and would also handle all their storage needs. Um, the other option that we gave in the beginning was that probation building that's currently being used. Perry looked at that building again and with to be able to outfit it to what they needed, plus give them extra space, adding a couple thousand square feet on, would cost about four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, so in conversations with the Board of Elections, they would be more in favor of building a new building that would fit all their needs, including storage and security. One thing that a couple of you have mentioned to me um, recently was to look maybe at some of the Autumn Square space. And I looked at that with, and I talked to Ty about that a little bit today with the leases. And the upstairs space of Autumn Square with what's currently being rented by two different groups is exactly thirty-five hundred and twelve square feet. So it's right in that square footage. It checks the box for the public accessibility. We do have fourteen payments left on that. As far as when that was put into place, that model was set up to, it would pay for itself with the rentals there. And then there's three rentals. There's the ventables that rent downstairs, which we wouldn't utilize any of that space in the Board of Elections. So those are some options. I did have Ty look at those leases today to determine any kind of if you decided to move forward with a plan like that, what you might do on that. The the what's combined with that with the rent payments, I estimate it's a little bit higher, but it would take about thirteen years of rent collection that you would receive in rent would be about the same amount it would cost to build a whole new structure for Board of Elections if saying you kept renting that space at the same exact rate to those same people for the next thirteen years. So that's just an option to put out there that you all kinda asked to to look into. And that's not something I've discussed with Board of Elections yet because it's relatively a new new thought. But Ty might can speak a little bit, too, to the to the lease as far as what you think as far as those are as the terms of the lease. But as far as the design of the courthouse, Judge Pickett and Judge Southern approved off on that design. And the cost would still, as we talked about last time, range in the upwards of towards eight million dollars. Since we met the last time, we have received that two million dollar courthouse renovation grant. It's actually here now. We've received the funding. So to speak in with Perry a little bit, you know, um, hopefully we've we've got the number right on this. At some point, inflation can really be a problem and we're kind of in a position where things are going up fast sometimes, but also it might come down eventually. It's hard to predict that. But that's the newest information that we've got for now. So I would love to get some feedback from you all and we've got everybody in the room. So if we have questions and can discuss, would be a great time to do so.
All right.
For the five hundred and ninety-five thousands, that includes like a piece of, do we have a piece of property somewhere available to put this at or?
Our our plan was across from where the probation building is now, where the helipad is at right now on the side. I spoke with EMS Director Brandon Gentry about what it would take to, I was talking about relocating the helipad. He said that could be done, so it could be a spot. It's already a pretty level spot there. You could build back into that area and have plenty of parking up there. So if you chose to do that option, it would, we have the space already to do that there in that area.
So if we did do that, would it have to budget again, build a new helipad somewhere else, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, they were actually moving that anyway. It seems like it's in a bad area, so. That's all I have right now.
The um, I guess I'd really like to explore the Autumn Square thing. We uh, when we purchased that building, we were going to make sure we, you know, got rent for it until we had it paid for. And then and then I think the discussion at the time was then we would have the option of using it as a county building or continuing to rent it. So um, I think we could, and plus we could possibly use some storage downstairs uh, that the garage folks are not using. It would be pretty secure as well.
Yeah, there's a couple of spaces down there. I talked with Linda earlier that are good.
Yeah.
Be good spaces for storage, too.
Yes, so um, or if we build a new building, I guess we can take the rental revenue and pay along with it or something. Maybe I, it may not be really, wouldn't cover the total cost or whatever, but.
Right now with all three renters, you're collecting about fifty-five hundred dollars a month in rental payments from the whole space.
Yeah, okay.
Probably make the payment then.
Which it could, and it covers your current costs, which you pay fifty-one hundred now for the space and that ends June of twenty twenty-three, so.
But let me make sure I understand. Uh, we're talking about building up a new structure, completely new structure up here where the helipad, is that correct?
Option, yes.
That's one of the options. And that design is what we were sent?
The design that you have is the courthouse, is the renovation and the expansion. There's not a proposed design yet for Board of Elections.
So therefore, we can start from scratch, get input
Right.
from our Board of Elections group.
Correct.
Jason Perry, David Burge, I see several people here from the Board of Elections. I just want to make sure, when you go into the Board of Elections office right now, the space is unbelievably small. I don't know how they can get everything in there personally. Because uh, the two times I came up here to file for uh, County Commissioner, Jason basically had to clear off the table so I could have a place to sign my name on. That's how small an area we're working with down there.
Yeah.
And and I'm looking at, okay, Autumn Square has been built. And we, you said, I believe it was thirty-five hundred and twenty-one or thirty thirty-five something square footage.
Thirty, it's thirty-five, twelve.
However, you're working with, you're working with what is there already, correct?
Correct.
Whereas if we build something brand new, we can design it to their specifications that would give them the most usage of storage because to me, storage has gotta be one of the main concerns.
Yeah.
I saw, did did Jason walk in?
Yeah, he's here.
Jason, would you say storage is one of y'all's biggest concerns?
Yeah, yeah, we have uh, yeah, I do think we have, our office does have some unique needs. Uh, we're compared to maybe some other departments. It's uh, not as much uh, individual office space, um, because we are a small department as much as it is uh, larger storage areas, areas uh, to work like as we prepare for the uh, primary election right now. Uh, you know, if we did have larger spaces to work in, that would that would be beneficial. So so, yeah, that would, storage and larger rooms.
I'm just saying, I guess, uh, Ms. County Manager, Ms. Schaver, that it seems like to me it would be awful nice if you were starting from scratch and you can design the buildings according to what they feel like their needs are.
Yeah, because that was one thing we identified when we met with Board of Elections was they really needed a good space for storage and accessibility to load those voting machines in and out of, even I think Miss Hare pointed out a shelter because when it's raining, they have to drag them out from where they are now and there's nowhere for them to really load them well. So you can design it so that all that would be accessible and a lot easier for them when that time comes and for public to be able to get in and out and have their meeting space that they need.
You also said it, Brandon Gentry said it wouldn't be a problem to move that.
Asked him that first thing. We looked at that spot to make sure that it wouldn't be an issue with moving that. And he said, no, they could figure out relocating that helipad.
Oh, I have that in general.
Okay.
And that five hundred and ninety-five thousand, does that include moving that helipad?
No.
If we looked at the cost of that? That's not gonna be cheap either. But I'm not opposed to what um, Commissioner Morris said about Autumn Square building as well. That's another option to look at. We'll, we spend a half million dollars or a three quarter million dollars to build a new building, so. I like to see the cost of what it would cost to move that helipad as well.
Yeah, I think um, the the thing that I do like about a new structure is that it just centrally locates everything here on one campus where people, you know, I mean, it would take some getting used to for people to know to come to Autumn Square, which is it's sort of centrally located to our county over there because it's not too far from Meadows. But um, also you think of it being a governmental type of entity. So you think of it as something that would be on this campus. But I'm not opposed to looking at both just to see the difference. But also you would have to figure in that moving that helipad and where you would move it to and how much that would cost as well. Because then if you start figuring all that, I'm gonna surmise that it's gonna be just about as cheap to build a new structure, keep renting Autumn Square, it's which is gonna be paid for in a little over a year. And then the money kinda offsets each other in a way.
Some of it.
Some of, and some of it, yeah, depending on the cost of moving that helipad and everything. So I think we just need a little more information about, as far as the courthouse plans and everything that's in here, I'm fine with all of that and how it looks. And I think the the only piece is where they're they're gonna go and is it gonna be a new structure? Or I think Autumn Square or a new structure is really your two options. I don't like the idea of just to save a little bit of money to have to redo that whole probation building doesn't seem like a good idea.
I wouldn't recommend that idea. It's just a number that we got.
But once we do the courthouse and and have that expansion, I know Stacy had mentioned she is about out of space in the DSS office. So she may need something um, with it might not take as much renovation up there for her because you wouldn't have to add the space. You could use what's there and maybe just do some new flooring or something in there and and she may need some of that space. There's always a need for the space.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. Yes.
One concern I have about moving the Board of Elections office location, office campus is security. You know, the security in elections has come up to be.
I hope everybody can hear you on live.
Thank you.
Yeah. One concern I have if you move it off campus is security. Here, we have the Sheriff's Department and they're in and out all the time. And as you know, in the past election, you know, security has become a major concern. And uh, that would be one thing I would like as far as keeping it on this campus would be having access to that security versus being remote somewhere else. And so that would be my my biggest concern. And uh, I would think it would probably be everybody's concern, you know, make sure we have a safe and secure, you know, election when everything that comes in and now that building plus early voting takes place there. So we we just want to make sure we keep it safe and secure, so.
Gotcha.
That's just, that's just my comment.
Yeah, thank you, David. That was David, um, Burge, who's on the Board of Elections.
Well, that's coming, I'll say, I have a totally open mind on it, and, uh, I would definitely, uh, I mean, just kind of do a comparison, however, some kind of cost benefit analysis or comparison of those options and any other one that you might think of that we haven't already, uh, thought of, uh, but I would definitely factor in what the Board of Elections wants to do, kind of heavily into the decision process as well.
I know from, like, just like what you just said, and from speaking to them, they're, they're really leaning towards a new space to be customized to what they need, because even if we utilize the Autumn Square space, we were talking about that today, it's divided up into some smaller offices on one side, would take a little bit of work to get the space that they need, as far as the larger space for storage or a meeting conference room or anything like that, so it would be a little bit more tied into that, too.
If you put it at Autumn Square, you would still be looking at some renovation costs.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I imagine the setup ain't going to be exactly something they're going to be needing, it's going to be feasible for them, for vote machines coming in and out and everything else, so. Also, look longevity, what's going to be less headache, and comparing all the prices, see which one makes more sense.
I think we're just living toward a new building.
The helipad get used very much, that helipad.
Not a lot.
I, it's missed it, I regrow so often, but I don't see much, you know?
A lot of time, Rick, we, we do scene runs now, they come to the scene.
Okay.
We don't use it very, very seldom.
You got many areas in the county that's already kind of set up for.
Already designated.
Have a company to come there, yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Is there any more discussion on that?
I'm fine with the courthouse as well.
Yeah, I'm too. If the judges happy with it.
Yes, the, we, yeah, the space is good. So just for the, for some clarification for us, we'll bring back the information that you asked for, as far as a cost on any kind of helipad relocation and the other items, um, and look at, look a little deeper into some of those. But as far as a timeline that you're thinking of for the courthouse, we have a lot of things to do preliminary to get that started, as far as project ordinances, all kinds of stuff has to be done before it actually starts to be worked on. And like I said, we have the two million dollars here now, but we're still talking about a, you know, a large sum of money, six million dollars that would have to be before, so it just, I just want to get kind of a general feel of what you're thinking on a timeline for that.
Are you thinking USDA to do the, uh, financing of the courthouse?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my optimal, because that's always the best, lowest interest, longest terms.
Okay.
So, but you know, that process is kind of lengthy, even if we start it tomorrow, we're talking about a pretty long time out before we ever get to breaking ground on anything.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I see, we've already been discussing the courthouse for how many months now?
Two or three, at least.
It was a lot longer. I don't know, it's just the price making me feel that way, but, no, I think we just need to.
I think it was October was the first time we officially talked about it, I think it was October.
I think you're right, because that's, I walked around the cane then, so, yeah. Way that everything's looking, cost ain't getting no better, manufacturing ain't getting no better, so we, I think we need to go ahead and move with it, because it's going to have to be done, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with going ahead with it. I figured we would try to incorporate it in the budget as we move forward in our budget talks, but if there's anything that can be done preliminary, like with the USDA and, and things that have to be done that take a while, we could go ahead and start that process if that's the consensus of the board.
We're so close to budget time, too, I mean, we're closer every day to that, we're going to deliver that on May the twenty-third, so since we've gone this way, we can, we can delete it the way the board would like to do it. I just know the judges were kind of interested to think, too, in getting sort of a, a timeline on that as well.
I think that the consensus seems to be to go ahead and move forward with it as soon as possible.
And then we'll bring back, um, we'll bring back the other information. Do you want us to try to just bring that back to you at the next meeting? This, it wouldn't be that much information to do.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Yeah. So you want to put this back on for discussion, just another time next meeting to talk about?
Well, I think, feel like the only part of it is, is the, about the, um, where the, the Board of Elections part, yeah.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so that's fine, just to firm that up.
Brandon Gentry just sent me a message and said he thought that it would be less than five thousand dollars about the helipad, and that Stewart was concurred that it might even be less than that.
Stewart's here.
To relocate the helipad.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's not, not a huge cost, I think so.
I just, I just want to reemphasize that I, I have a strong belief that if we're going to, uh, go with a new Board of Elections, that their input should be vital.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and I said that in the very beginning, that when we started with Autumn Square versus a new structure, if it's a new structure and you start from scratch, and we said, Perry, get with Jason and Board of Elections and see what they need and how they need it designed, you can do that. Whereas if you go to Autumn Square, you're going to have limitations where you can go. And if it, if we're talking only five thousand dollars, Brandon just sent your text that it would be only five thousand, or possibly that.
I'm saying the budget's.
Must be buy some cheap concrete.
I'll let you talk to him about that.
Brandon.
But, uh, I, I still say that it'd be like if you were wanting to build a new school.
Yeah.
And you wanted, it was an elementary, and how many kindergarten classes you had, and how many fifth grade, it all depend on numbers and what you have in storage. I just think they need to have a lot of input in this right here.
Definitely, okay. Well, you can bring us back, uh, a few more details, that the next meeting, it shouldn't be hard to figure it out, but we can go ahead and start the process.
[laughing]
All right, let's move on to the next item, which is the tax office agenda. Thank you.
As always, I'll just start off with a monthly tax collection status report. We've collected a little over twenty-four point nine million dollars, or a hundred and one percent of the, uh, budgeted amount for this fiscal year. Uh, the next item is our discovery and garnish report. Uh, we've discovered two hundred and forty-one accounts that has a value of a little over one point two million dollars, that's generated additional fifteen thousand dollars of income in revenue. Uh, we've processed four hundred and forty garnishments with a levy of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, the next item is our EMS billing and collections report. Uh, we have billed, uh, five thousand one hundred and eighteen transports, uh, we've charged a little over three point two million dollars, and we have collected a little over one point eight million dollars so far this fiscal year. Moving along to our, uh, quarterly report for data max, including NC debt set off, we've collected approximately eighty-seven hundred dollars, uh, in, in that program. Uh, the next item is real and personal releases, less than a hundred dollars. We have seven tax bills totaling two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Then the real and personal refunds, less than a hundred, there's five tax bills, a total of two ninety-eight seventy-four. Uh, real and personal releases, more than a hundred, two tax bills, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. And the final category, uh, real and personal refunds, more than a hundred, we have four tax bills, a total of eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. And the last item I have is, uh, five present use violate applications. That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
All right, any questions for the, Richard?
I'd just like to, uh, move the following items to the May ninth consent agenda, real and personal releases, more than a hundred, real and, uh, personal refunds, more than a hundred, and the present use violate applications.
All right, we'll do that. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Takes us to the River Street Network's contract discussion.
River Street pulled up on the link here.
Okay, they're going to Skype in?
Mm-hmm. They should already be there.
They are.
All right.
Hello, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good. Well, I'm coming to you today from our nation's capital in DC, where I'm attending the legislative conference for broadband, so I apologize for the backdrop of my hotel room. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today, um, and provide you additional updates of the last meeting. Um, we were able to meet with the broadband committee, uh, last Tuesday, I believe it was, uh, where we, we reviewed the entire agreement and addressed all six of the items that have been given to us at your last board meeting for consideration. So all six of those items have been addressed in the agreement. Um, would you, would you like for me to go through those six items with you now and just, uh, share with you a kind of a Cliff Notes version of how we address those items? Would that be beneficial?
I think it would. Is that good?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, the first item that was on the list, uh, spoke specifically to, uh, you know, unavoidable delays, the force majeure, timelines, um, all kinds of things, and what we ended up doing was adding a new section in the agreement, which was actually section three dot four. And in three dot four, it speaks to, uh, subject to securing grant awards and county contributions are assembled complete construction of the expanded power to the home network within five years of the date this agreement is executed by all parties, subject to any future grant or timeline schedules and provisions as existing revised and amended. So the main goal here is just basically to cover the fact that anytime we apply for a grant, that grant, um, if awarded, will have its own restrictions and timelines built into it as to, uh, the deadlines for when the, the, uh, bill design should be complete. And so we would follow that, uh, as scripted. Um, section two of the questions, um, it spoke, uh, to commencement and completion. So we actually addressed one hand to, um, one of the things that I think stood out was our attorney had added a hundred and eighty days from the receipt of the materials and equipment to begin the construction, and we just struck that from the contract. So upon receipt of the equipment and materials, we would begin immediately, um, on the bill design. There wasn't a need for the hundred and eighty days. Uh, number three, um, had a reference to the funding and where the funding would come from, American Rescue Funds and/or other future grant funds, um, or out of the county's general fund. Uh, we struck that from request of the county, so that's taken out of the agreement. Um, item number four, it, uh, was speaking in item four about, um, about the county automatically working with River Street and future grants that, that should come about, such as the CAD grant, um, in addition to the GREAT Grant. And I think there was some concern there that, that would the, would the county be tied to working with River Street, um, on any future grant opportunities that are out there? And I think you recall that your RFP requested us to find a solution to get broadband passings of five or two more people in the county, as well as to expand the wireless network. And in response, um, we proposed to use several ways that we would go about doing so. And those several different ways, um, we think is what caused you to choose us for your RFP. Um, and so we looked at it like, uh, we're going to use and exasperate every effort we can to leverage the money that River Street has and the money that the county provides to win as much grant funding as we can to continue to continuously expand this network in Stokes County. Um, let's see, section, uh, item number five, with regards to section one dot two, enhanced fixed wireless network project. Um, I think there were some questions posed when we were there at the meeting that kind of covered this, um, with specifics about the fact that we're looking at building nine towers to expand the wireless network. We don't typically, um, outline exactly where those towers are going to be until we get the completed engineering design work, uh, because the towers that we're proposing to use are all existing structures that are in the county, and so we have to secure, um, engineering, uh, study, basically to say that the, the towers will, uh, be able to support the equipment, uh, they can handle the load capacity. And so we didn't get extremely specific in the wireless segment, um, and I'm, I'm hoping that you guys understand why, that you will probably understand why that is, but we are, we have put in our RFP that we would be building, um, electronics on nine vertical assets to expand, and they've been strategically placed to get the best coverage. Um, and number six, the last item, the contract, uh, let's see. So is this contract, um, an alternate proposal to the RFP? And we felt it was exactly, um, in, in line with what the RFP proposed, and that was that if the county would supply two point four billion in grant funding to leverage River Street grant funding, we would take all of that funding together and collectively go after state funding and federal funding in the upcoming rounds that are, that are getting ready to come about in the next eighteen months. We've got one cycle that's going on right now, that's the one to come on a GREAT Grant, there's three hundred and fifty million dollars that the county, the state is proposing to, um, award, and that, that window closes next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday, so maybe, um, is that the six? Um, don't have my calendar in front of me, but it is next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday. So, um, those were the six items that we were addressing with broadband committee. Um, I would like to also say to you that we've received some additional guidance since we were there regarding this current grant cycle, and our engineers are actually rescoping the entire project. We feel like, based on, uh, new guidance, that we will potentially have more locations to pass in the project. And if awarded with GREAT Grant funds, um, we would be able to field pass more customers. So we should have that information, uh, to you real soon. But I think at this point in time, what we're asking the county to consider is to go ahead and at least, um, provide us a letter of support to go into this GREAT Grant application, and, uh, we hope to have the numbers and everything ready for that by the end of this week, and then we would be submitting that application, um, with the state. And then we can work out the total details of that and what that looks like and amend it to this agreement, so that we can get a, a signed agreement between the county and River Street.
Okay, do you want me to, six, any questions for you?
Yes, please.
All right. Rick, do you have any questions?
No, no questions right now, I think, I read, I read through the contract several times this weekend, I think it's really well-written, uh, it's, the situation we're in is, is like light years ahead of what we thought we would be when we started this project a few years ago, because at that time, we weren't considering fixed wireless, and at that time, we didn't have any indication there would be two point four million dollars of non-local money available to pay for it, so that puts us on a schedule that's, that's a decade ahead of, I think, what we thought we'd be able to get this done. Um, the contract, I, I like the ask fact that, that even though we're in an uncertain, uh, funding environment because of the grants and the way that that system works, they have tried to put every, or anticipate every scenario that could possibly come up, so that it will make it easier for us to track their progress. There's lots of numbers, both on funding and on, uh, uh, points that, to be accessed by the service and all that, so I think using those scenarios, uh, and the, the detailed and comprehensive language it was included in there will make it easy for us to, uh, to follow what's going on. They also, um, basically the way I interpreted the language, that, where they're basically on-call to come and give us an update anytime we want it on what they're doing, it's not set by quarter or anything, so I think that, I think given what's going on, that might be good, we may need them more often, and then other times, we may not need them quarterly, so, um, I, I look forward to, to getting those updates and seeing how the process is going. Um, the, uh, they're going to be able to, uh, from what the contract says, as, as they complete the project, we don't have to wait till the end to start turning customers on. Whenever they reach a certain financial feasibility, uh, they're, they will start turning, uh, or adding customers to the service, even though the total project is not completed, which I think will be well-received. Uh, by just pledging the two point four million dollars, we're going to get a, a complete fixed wireless network paid for by River Street. It will help fill- It will help fill the gap as we continue to try to get the fiber to the home completed. So, I think that's maybe the biggest deal of all, of being able to get this really fast-speed, quick-speed service to people that will eventually hopefully get the fiber. But I think they'll be really pleased with the level of service provided by the type of fixed wireless system that River Street's going to do, where they participated in the auction and bid on the spectrum and did some unusual things that will increase their capability to do that fixed wireless. So, and the committees are good with this. I'm good with it. I'm anxious to just get on with it and get this finished. So, our students and our businesses and every individual we can get it to will have this service sooner rather than later.
Mr. Nicholson, do you have a comment or question?
I do have one question, just to make sure I'm hearing this right. Didn't really have it last time. So, 11 and a half million for this whole project, correct?
That is correct. That could expand based on the new findings that we, the new guidance that we received. But we're still only asking the county for 2.4.
Correct. But it's 1904 locations, which is basically saying it's going to cost $6,039.92 per location. Is that kind of a high estimate?
Well, we have seen it more in some of the markets that we build in. But there is an additional $2,500 on top of that that River Street will cover to make the home proper-ready.
Okay. All right. I just figured y'all was anticipating some very hard ground between all these locations.
Sorry, I didn't hear all of that. Say that again.
I said, I guess, I was just figuring y'all was anticipating some hard ground between each one of these locations.
Yeah, yes.
That's all I have right now, Madam Chair, I think.
Mr. Menon?
Not right now.
Okay.
To tie it up, Madam Chair, did you have some concerns about some of this?
Well, I have a couple of questions if I could ask.
Sure.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I know in the first contract that River Street submitted, you had the minimum grant funds that would be needed was 3.85 billion. I take it since the number of locations has increased from 1904 to 2206, and the total cost has increased, then the minimum grant funds would also increase. Is that correct? Minimum grant funds needed?
The last statement you said broke up on me. I'm sorry. Say that again.
Well, I take it that since the locations have increased from 1904 to 2206, which increases the total cost, then the required minimum grant funds has increased. Is that correct?
That is correct, as far as what we would need to go and get in matching grant dollars from the state.
Initially, it was 3.85. Do you know what the revised minimum would be?
I don't, but I should have that by the end of this week. I did check with our engineering earlier this morning, and they're still going through now and analyzing the new data.
All right. In first reviewing this, my main problem was the complexity of it. Page two, all the different scenarios, which provides that if the county provides funding less than 2.4, then the amount of sites that we serve would be less. But assuming that the county contributes the 2.4 billion, is there any need to have 1.1.1 through 1.1.4 in this?
I'm sure we could probably simplify that if the county wanted to do that. Again, our main goal and objective in the agreement was to try to be as descriptive as we could to help create a sense of understanding around the process by which we were going to go to try and expand the grant funds, leveraging additional grant programs. And we could definitely talk about how to reduce or simplify this. And we would be open-minded to any recommendations or suggestions that you might have.
In 1.1.5, it's my understanding that if you do not obtain any grant funding and the county supplies 2.4 million, then RSN will install facilities for 1,171 locations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, that's the minimum under this agreement?
Correct.
With no grant funding? Plus?
That is correct.
Plus the wireless. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, that much is assured?
Yes, sir.
And depending on how much grant funding is received, it will go up to that, as far as the fixed wireless?
Yes, sir.
That was the main concern that I had. When I first looked at this, I'd only had about 30 minutes to review it. And I was getting lost in the details, in the different scenarios. It appears if you're going to put in the 2.4, then there's no need to have these different scenarios. You've got to get the minimum of 1,171 locations with the fixed wireless. And you're going to get all the wireless. And then, we don't know how much you're getting grant funds, and it goes up to that. And that's, you know, I don't guess there's any way to determine now. That is a minimum, as far as the grant funding. That could go up. There's too many variables to be certain, as far as total it's going to take to do everything, to do the... Right now, it's 2,206 locations. And I think I understood you to say that those could increase. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Is the 2,206 locations all, right now, identified as unserved areas? Or unserved people, or potential clients, whatever? Are we talking about?
Yes, the 2,206 locations are in the county that do not currently have broadband internet access services available. At least 100 by 20.
At at least 100 by 20.
That's correct. So, what we have to do is identify out of those 2,206, how many don't have 25 and 3, because that's the requirement of the current GREAT Grant application. So, that's what our engineers are going through now. And that 2,206 locations could increase. And this is a lot to, I mean, we, I think I mentioned it at the last board meeting, we kind of eat, breathe, and sleep this. And it has been a lot for us to chase as the grant programs have been maturing and materializing. And part of the discussion that's going on in DC today and tomorrow stems around the capital improvement money that was set aside. It was about $10 billion. And that money's coming down to the states. North Carolina's going to get about $200,000. It's going to be, just, it's a little more than $200,000. It's going to be going into some of these programs that we've illustrated to you in the past. And then, there's the NTIA money, which they call the B money. And that money will be coming down at 42 billion with a B. And that's coming down to the 50 states. So, there's a lot of buckets that we'll be dipping in to try to leverage the county money.
I think where the rub is, is between the general population's understanding of why this can't happen any sooner and Commissioner Morris's comment about we're so far ahead and light-years ahead of where we thought we would be. And I get what he's saying, because he has, you know, he's been dealing with this for a while. But the general population and the general consensus of all the Facebook pundits, so to speak, is that this board is not doing anything, and this board needs to be replaced because we need people in here that can do something about broadband and get it out to the county. And it should have already been there. And I see it on there every day, these kind of comments. And I, you know, just refrain from commenting or saying anything because there's no way I can adequately explain it to somebody in a paragraph even, you know. And I mean, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just saying you can't make people understand why it hasn't...
Yeah, they're not familiar with the details.
Already happened. And they're frustrated. And that frustration turns on to us. And then, sometimes our frustration may turn on to you guys because we're getting beat up about it. And it's just unfortunate that we can't explain it better to people and make them understand why it takes so long. And they think that, they really think that the county is just dragging their feet on paying for it, when that's not the case at all. And, you know, we have all this grant funding to take advantage of at the state and federal level and leverage our money that we received, that we can use for this. So, it's a win-win for everybody, but it's just really frustrating to see these comments. And I know the people are frustrated, you know, because they want to be able to, you know, they have working from home right now, and they can't do it because they don't have any service and students that need to do their work from home. Because even though we're back in school, a lot of the schools are doing these virtual days now. And they can't do virtual days, so the teachers have to send these packets of work home. I understand their frustration, but at the same time, we really are trying to make something good happen. But it's not going to be, because one of the problems, which I've tried to tell people, are the maps that the state is using are incorrect. And trying to get that corrected is taking a while. And hopefully, some of these unserved and underserved areas will be identified that weren't on the first map. And, you know, they don't understand that either, so.
I think one thing Madam Chair may be able to do, I think one thing that'll turn that tide quicker and anything else, is once we sign this contract and they see what's in it. And we could even...
We'll have to break it down for them.
Do some marketing to illustrate what's in it.
Well, that would be beneficial, I think. And if River Street wants to help us with breaking that down in a marketable fashion that we can get it out to the public, that would be wonderful. So... That's your field of expertise, so we would welcome that help for sure. But that's the only comment I have. I'm ready to move on with this project and get the funding here and get it done and get whatever you need to apply for that GREAT Grant by next Wednesday.
Well, I still, I'm in total agreement. We need to get it done. However, we started out in draft one with 1904. Draft two was 2,206, correct?
Yes, sir.
Going from 1904 in draft one to 2,206 in draft two. And then, I heard Ty come up with, and it could increase more. Did you not make that statement?
Correct.
How are we going to know the possibility of increasing even more as we go on? Because we've just gone from draft one in 1904. And I also read this thing three or four times over the weekend. And now, we're at 2,206. So, how are we going to know where we're going to wind up at?
Well, when our engineers get done with the work they're doing now, we'll have a stronger number that we would be able to share with you. Certainly, when we do the application to North Carolina's GREAT Grant program, we will be doing that based on location addresses. So, it's not based on, I mean, there's polygons that are drawn around on areas and regions, but there are physical addresses that will be applied for in the grant. And so, we will know every address that we're applying for because we will be submitting that up to the state from where we extracted it and pulled it down from the state's NC1 map.
The level of funding from the county won't change if the number of addresses change, correct?
That is correct.
That's the main thing, I think, that we need to focus on.
This is such a dynamic environment, the internet business. We're just going to be getting changes all the time, the board will. And these updates will be really useful for us to understand that and make adjustments as we go, I think.
Uh, Ty?
If I understood you correctly, what you need today is a letter of intent to go forward with the grant application and wait to sign the contract until you get better numbers and simplify this.
That is correct.
One last comment, can I make, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The, I'm fine if River Street and Ty want to take details out of the report. I personally like details because I just feel like it, I mean, I feel like I can understand, maybe, track things better, but if that's not needed, and, you know, then that's fine, too. I'm good either way.
You're talking about the things that were in the contract?
Yeah, those things he said that we could maybe take out, and River Street said we could adjust them.
I'd have to see what the final numbers are.
Okay. I think that'll be fine. Okay. Well, we'll look at that one more time for sure, when we know more about those. But we'll go ahead and get your letter of intent. Do I need to move that to action?
If you all just would give permission for Amber and I to draft a letter of support, we can send that to them to send for the grant. Just the consensus of you all giving us, authorizing us to do that. It's really enough for that, for a letter of support.
Okay. Well, we'll authorize that. That's the consensus of the board.
And also, what, when do we need to have the contract signed by? That's the other question.
Well, the deadline is working under, which was May 4. Do we have a looming deadline to get the contract signed?
Well, what typically happens is if the GREAT Grant is awarded to us, then the state will require us to show proof of partnership through an agreement. And so, that's when that would definitely have to be...
Finalized.
It always looks better if you're going into the application saying you already have an agreement in place.
Right.
Can we just delegate that to Shannon also, to work with Ty and sign that when it's ready, or?
That would be fine, too. I think there's just some, yeah, very little changes from what the committee came up with and what you decided. I think it's pretty close to being able to be signed, so.
I think also with the deadline coming up, it'd be easier for them to deal with it instead of trying to call all us back in.
Delegate them to sign it. That's fine.
Us having an agreement in place before the grant goes in is, I think, really important.
Yeah.
Yeah, since we're going to do that, probably do move that to action and just go ahead and authorize us to sign, or sign, for me, to sign the contract. And go ahead and click that letter of support, since we're going to do the contract, too.
All right. So, we're going to move the item C.
Attempt to do it before the grant goes in, so that it shows we have an agreement, if you would.
We'll move that to...
We can get that done before the, if we send it back to them and they're okay with it, we can get that done before the board.
We're going to go ahead and move that to action item C.
Madam Chair, I hate to ask this, but can we have a five-minute break, please? I need one.
Yes, we can. We sure can. All right. We'll take a five-minute break. Come back. Thank you. Greg.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
And then we'll kind of be on a quarterly rotation throughout the course of the end of the year there, looking to continue that in 2023, once that year starts. Really, the goal through that program is just to keep employees educated on what they have access to through either prudential or just general planning for retirement type of information. And then the suitcase drive and foster program. So when we first met with y'all in January, we learned of the jail that you guys got done building, which we found out more parents go into, which puts more foster kids out in the community. So we did a luggage drive for the foster kids, which we actually delivered the luggage earlier today to EMS facility and filled up a bedroom in that facility. So very excited to be able to do that for y'all there. So plan year updates, looking in 2022, 2023. So this is what we're changing for this upcoming year. So we are changing our pharmacy benefit manager this year. The estimated cost of that change is going to be about $250,000 in savings. That's based off of current consumption of pharmacy drugs. So if our utilization stays the same, we estimate a $250,000 savings. In conjunction with that PBM switch, we are adding in the paid health program, which just helps families and households find drugs for cheaper costs, and it is based off of household income. So there's programs out there that will help fund prescription drugs or contracts with other pharmacies to allow families to get drugs for cheaper than they are today. So the whole goal of changing that prescription drug benefit manager really is to just drive that cost down and help the employees out as well. My group is a new program that we're adding in for you all as an employee assistance program. So really, that just gives your employees access to speak with a counselor if needed. There's six free sessions included in that program. There are other things within that program they can talk about. Will generation is one of those things within that program that they have access to. My group is a group across the country that does a great job. They're big in public administration, but they will do a very good job for y'all. We'll be rolling that communication out and that benefit July 1. So we'll get that communication out to employees. It'll be in their benefits handbooks, and they'll have access to that. So hopefully, they really appreciate that. And again, they have six sessions there throughout the course of the year. That's them and their dependents. So that'll be a new benefit for y'all. We do want to promote wellness resources offered by MedCost. So again, through that bi-monthly communication, we intend to send communication out about wellness programs that MedCost already offers free of charge within their platform, really just educating employees on how to live a healthier lifestyle. And they have access to that stuff already, so we just want to make sure it's being communicated. So we'll be working on that this year. There is a telecare blood glucose meter for diabetic members on the plan, and we have really identified there's 49 members on the plan that have diabetes today. So what we're trying to do is really just guide them down a better path. The telecare blood glucose monitor, what that does is it takes in the information from employees when they check their blood sugar, and it takes it and sends it to someone at MedCost, so they can clinically drive them down the best path to get either their insulin better sustained on a better schedule. If they're having insulin spikes, just trying to figure out how to monitor that and maintain it better. Through that telecare program, that will guide them to more programs focused specifically on their individual needs when it comes to their diabetes. So we'll be looking at trying to communicate that as well. Gaps in Care Outreach Program, that's a program that MedCost offers that we'll be making sure is communicated correctly to you guys and to your employees. Really, what that is, is just making sure that everyone is up to date with their annual physicals and their age-specific screenings. Doing your annual physical and doing the age-specific screenings can really catch critical illness and chronic illness upfront before it turns into something serious. So that is just a measure to try and maintain claims costs and keep the costs down. Any questions?
Board members have any questions so far?
Just one quick one. On the wellness programs, we had a wellness program one time here a few years ago, I think that was mandatory. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm 100% sure about that. Where we got reduced rates by having folks come in, and we went through the medical thing with the nurses and so forth. And we ended up, a lot of folks discovered some real problems they had that they didn't know they had with that. I just wondered, are those kind of programs still, like it looks like this is voluntary wellness?
It is.
Kind of thing? Do they do mandatory wellness programs?
They can do mandatory programs. So we would recommend a softer step into that, maybe recommending that for a year or two of our relationship. But really, just trying to get the education out there first, letting employees know they have access to it. Once they understand the tools they have access to, then you can make it mandatory. The problem is, a lot of folks probably just don't know they have access to it today.
Okay.
So really, just trying to communicate it efficiently and effectively year one, and then year two, looking at maybe making some of it mandatory, or making folks earn dollars into a certain portion of their plan or pay more in their premium. But that is something we'll discuss.
Okay, that's a good approach, I think, to do it that way.
Yes, sir.
You can move on. Go ahead.
All right, so speaking of the numbers, so what we have today, we're looking at our stop loss insurance today is with Unum. What we're proposing is that we move to Symmetra. The savings there on the stop loss premium is $83,000 if we move to Symmetra for the stop loss. And just so y'all understand, there's fixed costs when it comes to self-funding, and then is your claims cost. Your claims cost is what's going to go up and down. Your fixed cost is obviously going to stay fixed throughout the course of the year. So that fixed cost has gone down $83,000 by switching from Unum to Symmetra. Okay? So what we have to discuss today is, based off of the underwriting, we need to figure out whether or not we want to give ourselves a 5% increase based off of this slide and a 10% based off of the next slide. But if we look at this slide here, we'll just kind of walk through the numbers. Up at the top is the annual admin cost, then you have your annual stop loss cost. The next is your attachment point. Okay, so the attachment point is your max claims liability. So if Stokes County hit the max liability that they had, it would be that annual attachment point at 4.2 today. Next year will be 4.3. The annual expected cost is what the underwriters and all of the assessments, they analyze and think that you guys are going to hit 4.1 today from a claim standpoint. Next year would be 3.9. Okay? So you have your max versus your expected. Usually, you budget somewhere in the middle of those. Okay? So what we're funding today is around 3.1. So by the end of the year, 3.1 will be funded into the health plan program. Fortunately, we are running well this year, and that's okay. But we are underfunded when you look at the max liability. Okay? So let's look at, talk about a fully insured scenario, just to make it a little clear. If you were fully insured, let's say Blue Cross, and we moved into an arrangement last year with Blue Cross, 4.1, or sorry, 4.2 was the maximum liability. We would have paid 4.2 regardless of Blue Cross, and they would have kept 4.2, right? We budgeted 3.1 last year. Fortunately, we've had a good claims year, we're going to be below that number. So that's a good thing. So our goal here with recommending a 5 or 10% increase is to get us closer to that max liability. We don't recommend going all the way, because that would be a big increase, but we are having to cover some ground for last year, too. So we recommend doing a 5 or 10%. Does that make sense on those numbers? So this is the 5%, what we're looking at. On the overall annual cost, it's about $100,000 increase. Okay? That's not taken into effect, and again, these are strictly just budgeting numbers. If we have a good claims year, really, the way that you win in self-funding is you accrue those claims numbers that you have left over into a savings account. And then you can offset your costs the next year, and you continue to beat the market. It's like investing in the market. Every five years, you're going to have a downturn, but over the course of the five years, you'll win. So we want to just get into an arrangement where we're funding correctly, we have funds in our savings account, that we can offset the increases or lower the premiums eventually. So that's where we're trying to get to. We think that doing a 5 or 10% increase will start that path. So here's the 5% numbers. Do you have any questions about these before we go to the 10%?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the 10% overcurrent. So the 10% overcurrent would be about a $300,000 increase to premium. So 5 would be about $100,000. The 10% would be about $300,000. So you see the numbers difference. You have those as well in your packet, so you can kind of chew over those numbers. Let us know if you have any questions as you look through them. But we are getting the open enrollment materials ready as well, so time is kind of of the essence. But both would put us on a really good path from a funding standpoint.
To make sure I understand this quick question, so if we went 10%, we'd have a more conservative budget, is what you're saying, right?
That is correct. And if you, if you look at funded versus expected down right above the monthly rates, it shows the percentage of claims that would be funded, so versus the max liability. So if you have a 10% increase, it's 86% funded. That means there's 14% out there that's not funded. Okay? So if we, as a county, hit that max liability, there's 14% kind of unaccounted for. If you do the 5%, it's 83% funded. So going from 5 to 10 buys you three more percent. And again, we're running well today from a claim standpoint. We will be monitoring claims next year. We're going to put programs in place to help monitor those claims and keep them down. But that is a risk that we need to talk about and be comfortable with.
Board members have any more questions?
Let Shannon figure that out and recommend something to us.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, and also, that $83,000 savings that we're going from switching from the stop loss company.
Right.
You could sort of take that off the bottom line, too, right?
That's guaranteed.
If we did 5% as a $100,000 increase, we're going to save $83,000.
Correct.
So technically, you're only having about a 17%.
And the estimated pharmacy savings as well. I mean, so there's some stuff, yeah, I mean, just we have to see the plan year play out, but there's estimated pharmacy savings, too, that will play into all of that.
Okay.
In doing all of that, we are able to keep the same plan design. So I know the employees have had this plan design for a while. We are able to keep this plan design. Our goal over the course of the next few years will be to improve the plan design, and we can talk about those ways as we move forward. But just to reiterate, we still have the HRA in place today. That is going to be staying in place for the next plan year. So we'll have the same plan design, same HRA, no changes there. I think employees would be appreciative of that. Any questions on that? All right, so for the dental, all of the other lines of coverage are staying the same from a premium and plan design standpoint. Our dental, we are getting a slight increase. It does say 8%, however, that's not like an 8% medical increase, it's much smaller numbers. But the reason MetLife has given us an 8% increase is because they came about 28% below the market last year, and the market is still up where they were last year. So we did shop the market and go to other carriers. MetLife, however, was the most competitive with the renewal. They came out originally with an 11%. We were able to negotiate that down to an 8%. So we agreed that that was just kind of the best position to keep your employees in, get that continuity of coverage, and have their dentist have the same carrier as well.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, so this is our open enrollment timeline. I know this is getting a little more of the details than you guys want to know, but just keeping you updated on what's going on. So we look to send communication out to employees starting May 2nd, so that's right around the corner. Send Ease Log information to employees. Ease is a technology platform, the Ben Admin System the employees have access to. That communication will be going out 5/13, so a week after the 2nd, and then open enrollment will be starting the 16th. That way, you guys can have deductions in with your checks by the time that you need them, and employees can have cars if they make changes. Any questions?
Madam Mature, I do have one question.
Go ahead.
And it really wasn't, I'm sure everybody probably in the room knows the answer but me, but I'm not covered by the insurance here at all. I have separate coverage, so it doesn't affect me. However, if one of our county employees were to, let's say, have a heart attack or something happened to them here on the job, and I don't know who, Zach, you, or Gillie, the one, whoever can answer this, and they had to be taken by ambulance to any of the hospitals, does our coverage cover ambulance cost for an employee if they were in need of an employee? Let's just say right now Shannon fell over. Shannon, I'm sorry, she was. But she fell over and she needed to be transported by ambulance. Will she get a bill for that ambulance, or will this, will our coverage take care of the ambulance?
She will get a bill for the ambulance, because ambulance provider is not contracted with any care viewers in the state.
That's what I wanted to know.
But that's not, that's not MedCost's problem, that's the ambulance company is not contracted with anyone. But so, we worked with them directly this year to make sure the billing is billed correctly, because we did have a couple of questions that when we started.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that answer.
But that's, I mean, that's an easy, that's an easy question, that's easily confused. You would think it was a network.
Praying for you, Shannon.
Well, I mean, honestly, I can make a, I think I can make a recommendation that you'd be happy with if you want me to kind of go through what I've thought process, because we've been looking at this together for a while, so it's not the first time I've seen it. Honestly, with what we did this year and with Zach coming on board, and Zach used to be with us with EBA when Doug Dunn was still here, and then when Doug unfortunately passed away this year, Zach was kind enough to step in and help us through some transition. And then we went through the process of seeing some different firms, and overall, they just offered us the most support and able, they straightened out a lot of claims for us and a lot of issues, and he's been working really hard with our employees and doing a great job. And we cut some costs in some other places, as well as cutting that $83,000 out of the stop loss. So for a lot of reasons, I feel like as aggressive as they're being on trying to get our claims numbers down, and we're already trending really well, that we could go with the 5% this time and not go any higher than that right now for two reasons. One, I think we will be fine. Two, I don't want to pass that on. If you look on this list of the 5% or the 10%, you can see our employees that cover spouses, child, children, family. When we go up an employee cost, their cost also goes up, so they're going to have to pay a lot more out of their pockets. And 5% is enough really to absorb for one person that already has a pretty high premium for their children, their spouses, their families. Certainly won't want to pass that over to them any more than that in one calendar year. So I would recommend that we just go with the 5% increase with the rates that Zach is suggesting. And if we can, if you all are in agreement with that and have any questions about what I'm thinking on that, certainly glad to answer it. I think it would be helpful if we approved that today, like we do in the past sometimes for insurance renewals, so he can go ahead and start that rollout on open enrollment. That's just my, that's my opinion.
I was looking at that on the monthly rates, and I'm certainly in agreement with that, because each one, employee only, employee plus spouse, employee plus child, plus children, plus family, they all are on the one you were talking about. So I'm in agreement with what your recommendation is.
I'm good with it, too.
Feel comfortable with that. Okay. All right, so move that to action. Action item D. Thank you. We appreciate the presentation.
Absolutely. That's it from us, but I did want to point out, so this is our team that'll be working with your employees. We're excited, like I said, to start the partnership with y'all this year. We do come up monthly to build those relationships with your employees, so they have a level of comfort with us. So if y'all ever need anything or ever have any questions, you know, please feel free to reach out, as we've told the employees as well. But thank y'all.
Thank you, Mike Zach.
Thank you. Okay. So that takes us to the proposed maintenance of effort budget request, item E.
And I'll take care of that. That is just, you've seen this in your budget every year. It is just the proposed maintenance of effort budget for this coming fiscal year, it'll be in your budget. It's the $398,000 that are at, $398.20 that the county appropriates into the maintenance of effort budget each year. This, not a lot of change from last year's proposal, you can look at the breakdown of it, include it on your agenda. All these services are essential services, they're for use with our county with mental health and substance abuse disorders, trying to educate people about that. The amount stays the same, the $398.20. The only difference is just a little bit of the division of the money, which there's not very much difference in that either. I know that Stacy, DSS Director Stacy Elms, did work with Vaya on anything they might cover, because they actually started covering some Narcan kits and things like that, that we could take some of this money out and move the dollars around and use them in other places to help more. So they're funding some of those things and giving things, but it's still that same total. And you'll see, we've still got the community paramedic program going with this money, that $100,000. That's been really beneficial. Still Monarch, with the Stokes Opportunity Center in Wantacove, still getting funded at that same $100,000. So not, not a lot of changes, just a few little money differences in the division, but still the same total. And this is, this is, if you all are in agreement with how this money's been divided, this can go to the next meeting's action agenda, because we budget the total, we just want to get it approved a lot before the budget.
All right, so we'll have that on action at the next meeting. And that takes us to item F, the green box site redesign for Pinnacle and Wantacove.
All right. Let Perry come up and help. So you can, Perry's going to go over some of his designs if you've got questions about those, but you know, as attached on the agenda is a couple of proposals for those. Our recommendation would be to start with Wantacove, that was approved first in your 1920 budget, seems like just last year, but it's been a couple of budgets ago. We at that time had allocated the $300,000 to be financed and approved in that budget, and then the next year, you went and approved Pinnacle and same amount of money. Those have not been completed yet, as you know, we've had a little bit of issue trying to find a sufficient land space for that, that we could all be in agreement on, that was a good space. So we went back to the drawing board with that a little bit, with Stuart and Perry, and looking at just keeping them where they are, coming up with something that pretty much works for everybody. I think the both sites look good. If we could start with Wantacove, and you all also approve for us to use the state capital grant that we received, we talked about it in that budget, the work session we had recently, and I submitted that plan to the state for that directive grant, and they approved this for that. So we have actually already here the $250,000 to go towards this project. The only really downside to keeping it in the area that we currently have it in is a little bit of inconvenience when it does have to shut down for a little while to be renovated. We did talk with Stuart and with Harry at the landfill, we could put some extra boxes at Pinnacle, we do Wantacove, not Pinnacle, Pine Hall, we do Wantacove, and over at the Sizemore Road Site to kind of help with that volume. But in all in all, I think the new, the new setup, everybody can be happy with this, it generates the traffic a lot better through there, not causing as many delays, I don't think, putting some compacters in there. And the Pinnacle site as well, if you look over it, also kind of takes care of that in the existing location, without having to worry about relocating it and trying to figure out those other areas to put it in. So we just wanted to present this to you all to look at, to get your feedback on the proposed plan, to keep them in the sites that they're at, and then we can move forward with, especially starting with the Wantacove site, and get that one completed first, and then we'll work on Pinnacle after that.
Okay. Board members have any initial questions about what they're seeing on these proposals? Or? I have a question about Pinnacle. Is there a way to incorporate some type of recycling bins or something at that site? Or is there just not space, or?
They currently have one compactor as a recycle, and that can also designate others as recycle, so there is room to do it. But granted, at Pinnacle, there isn't much room on the site. That's the real trick about that site.
Okay. And I guess as you're looking at that Pinnacle site, and the problem is, from what I understand, a lot of it is the, there's just certain times of the day, especially on Saturday, that it gets backed up. So I think we could look at maybe tweaking the time a little bit. I've been told, I guess, the problem is it having to close early enough for them to get the stuff down to Haynes Mill Road Site before they close and things, because if it was open a little bit longer, I feel like it wouldn't, people wouldn't all be rushed to go there at the same time.
That's actually what this plan does, because by adding the compacters, the projection, and this is both sites, the most important thing it does is means transfer trucks don't have to run on the weekend.
Oh, good.
So that means the potential of expanding it ever is possible, and you're not tying into getting to Haynes.
Okay, I see what you're saying. That would be good, because if we could even extend it an hour, hour and a half or something on Saturday, and everybody wasn't trying to go at one time, that would, that would help in getting the traffic off of 52, all 52, maybe somehow doubling up two lanes inside there or something. And also, we're talking to DOT about some signage and things that they could put to warn people, slow down coming down the hill, maybe a flashing sign or something.
Yeah, the biggest problem is there's just not enough space to get a stacking lane or anything to stage cars or vehicles before they come dispose of their waste. And we looked at trying to increase that space, and just with the topography of what's going on there, it'd just be wildly expensive to do anything on that site.
Yeah. Maybe the adjustment in the time will help a lot, adding a little bit of time there. But I think the plans look good. I mean, I think it's a step in the right direction. I, you know, I don't think there's any way around having to close it while you're renovating it, and just having to, people will just have to be, you know, inconvenienced for a little while, but it'll be worth it when we can get something better in there for them.
That would, that would have been the beneficial part to being able to put it in a new location, was you could build that and then just not have any lapse time. But I, we've just, we've looked all around that area, Pinnacle, to Wantacove, and just not been successful in finding a good relocation spot, so.
Nobody wants a waste site beside them.
How long do you have to close them? Do you have any idea of the construction time?
What do you think on construction time, if, as far as being closed down? I mean.
We're probably talking for, we've got a lot of retaining wall work to do, is kind of the thing that's going to take the most amount of time. It's probably a three and a half, four month event.
For each one?
Yeah. Each of them have kind of.
Each of them probably the same, but yeah.
Actually, the grading we're doing at Pinnacle is going to mess it up even more than that.
But if, as long as we can keep the one in the, that Sizemore Road open, you know, it's a little inconvenient, but it'll just have to work. Any other questions about this?
Just want to be sure. Perry, here, I'm looking at your stacking line, at the one at Wantacove on 89. So we're redesigning as to where the entrance to that one will be the first, you've got a line here, it says stacking line, and that's the entrance area coming from Wantacove toward Danbury.
Correct. We've gone from a site that has the one in and out.
Right.
To having an entrance and an exit, which should make it a lot safer, too, because you've got folks going both directions, coming and going, turning into each other, and then when you put that with folks stacking, not being able to stack and have to wait on the highway, it's, it's just bad. So we're, we're trying to help out with that. You know, ultimately, if we had all the money in the world, we'd, we'd try to have a kind of a turnoff lane off the road to get folks, even more folks off sooner, but there just isn't money to do that, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do they still have one over on 66, don't they?
Yes.
Might be something you know, might want to put in the paper with it, what's this happen to it? I know the road's closed a lot, now they put the bridge in, so that's another hamper, but I still thought they had the one over on 66.
Yeah, and we would, with both of them, but if we're in Wantacove first, we would put signage at the existing site of when it's going to be shut down, where the alternate locations will be, well before we do any closure, just to be sure everybody knows what's happening.
And this isn't something you want to start in November, December.
No.
Because the, the three and a half, four month project turned into an eight month project.
Oh, of course.
So we do have to be kind of careful about that.
All right, that sounds good. We'll be very cognizant of that as we move forward with it, but thank you.
Okay.
Looks good.
Yeah, and like I say, you've, you've approved both projects to do them in the budgets prior, just in a different way of either looking at renovating, I'm looking at relocating, so now we're just presenting this. And then, like I say, we do have that $250,000 now in play to where we were going to finance. I'm not sure how far we'll get on that $250,000.
We'll spend it all. We actually talked to Stuart about the way we balance this budget is with the amount, with the actual amount of hard paving we can do, that that's how we balance. We'll do as much as we can do. It'd be nice for everybody to basically come in, be on pavement the entire time, where now most of all of its gravel.
That'd be good.
So that's.
Sell that land up to Pinnacle we bought, that would be, apply that. Sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the resolution supporting grant application for the.
Do that to action or next time or something on the green box?[1755.24] Move that to action or next time or something on the green box?
You need it in action.
Yeah, I mean, you all can certainly do it next time, either whatever you'd like to do, just on the plans that you're in agreement with the plan.
Okay.
You can do that on today or May the 9th.
Just hold it till May the 9th. So the next item is the resolution supporting the grant application for the Stokes-Danbury Water Replacement.
We're, we're Bill Lester's here, he's been here the whole time. Sorry. So, since you're here, I'll let you take care of it, I had something, but I was, I didn't know you were coming.
Either way, if you'd like to.
So.
Okay, thank you, and it's no problem whatsoever. Glad to be here. As you know, we've been talking about a lot of water products, we've got a few things going on with the $8 million NCDQ project, and hopefully, your $18 million earmarked project's starting very soon. Mark Lacy, working with Stuart and others, you know, realizes there's some other improvements needed. We're in the middle of probably the most available funding we'll ever see in this state, at least in my career, and we wanted to at least take a swing at some more money. There is a little bit of a, a reason we're here before you tonight. The earmark was technically to Stokes Water and Sewer Authority, and there is an ear, a total max amount, so we, we're thinking that as long as Stokes County makes the request, and Stokes Water and Sewer Authority's on the earmark, will be considered and be able to gain from the same pot of money, so to speak. This is technically federal ARPA funding to the state of North Carolina. A lot of that money's been distributed to many different places. This is at the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality through the Division of Water Infrastructure, and we're not a distressed system, we're an at-risk system, so we're, we're going after that pot of money. The proposed project that, that we've put together with the staff is water main replacement work. A lot of the lines here in Danbury, while we'd like to be able to include some of them in the earmark, we realize that earmark with current prices and inflation, it may get nudged out, and there's a lot more than we had in mind anyway, so what we did is kind of looked, took a comprehensive look, kind of put arms around about 16,000 feet of lines that need to be replaced, and put it all in the request. Now, the request is going in, it's, it's very competitive. And what I mean by that, not only is this the most available funding we've seen available, there are more people vying for it probably than ever, because everyone thinks that, that amount is there and it's going to be easier to get. So it's, it's very competitive. And, and our chances probably are not as, as good as the others we brought before you, but 50/50 is a good chance. And what we've developed comes up to a total grant request of $5,784,300. Again, that is 100% grant request. If the board wanted to make it a, a case where you would be willing to accept up to a certain percentage loan, we can put that in there also, just in case that there's some other funds available. But a, as we've got it presented to you, it'll be 100% grant, no cost at all to the county. The resolution is, if the board so chooses to submit, give, give us the permission to submit it and, and have the chairman and Northern County Manager sign off on the final documents, which I think you have tonight too. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on the resolution, or the amounts, or any details that I can.
Okay, thank you.
One quick one, what's the difference in at, at risk versus distressed?
The distressed systems are, are, most of the folks that I've seen that fell into the distressed scoring, and I'm going to do the best I can here, the distressed scoring is something that was developed through the State Water Infrastructure Board with the NCDQ and the local government commission, looking at the finances and the operations of water and sewer utilities, trying to prevent utilities from becoming kind of in that disastrous zone to where they financially cannot move forward. Right now, they are operating, in other words, the LGC and DEQ have taken over like three, four, or five systems, and they're trying not to ever have to do that again. So they developed a system, and the distressed units scored eight or higher on numerous financial factors, operational factors, number of customers, things like that. I forget without your full application here what your score was, it was below that, so you did not fall into distressed, which is a good thing technically, you know, you've, you've managed the system well and stayed off of that. I think you're at risk because you meet the local government factors, you know, when it comes to median income and a lot of those factors, you, you fall just low enough, and with your score kind of in the middle, you are allowed to basically ask for a little more money than the rest of the, the, the systems. There's a, there's a distressed group that have that designation, there's a at-risk group that just, most of our rural customers are hitting that at-risk group, and then there's other, and there's less money over here in the other categories.
Okay.
The higher the category we can place ourselves into, the better we are.
Okay, thanks, Bill, I answered my question.
Yeah, thanks for explaining that. Any other questions? Ready to, do we need to move this to action, Shannon, today?
Yes, because it's a deadline tonight.
I should have said that we are, that the application that you want to approve for today.
All right, well, we'll move this to item A today on our action. Thank you. Okay, that takes us over to the action agenda, and item A is the Stokes County Aging Planning Committee Appointment, and at the last meeting, the board nominated Brandon Hooker to the Stokes County Aging Planning Committee. I'll open the floor for any further nominations.
Motion to approve.
All right, second. All right, I'm all, all in favor?
Aye.
All in the board, Brandon Hooker.
Okay.
Hooker.
Hooker. Hooker. You're fine.
We had a call, I was looking at it.
All right, all right, so Hooker. That's okay. The next item is the RFP for the Audit Services, which we did on discussion last time. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. This item C is the River Street Action, will give Shannon the authority to go ahead and sign, just making a few minor changes to the contract per, as discussed today with Ty, and you're going to email the final thing back to the board or whatever, and so we can get the ball rolling, and they can include that when they go after that great grant funding.
Along with that letter of support.
Along with the letter of support.
Yep.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The insurance renewal that we just had from Cypress Solutions, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make just a note that we're approving the 5%.